Good morning, everyone, and I'll welcome you to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April the 10th. And also, anyone in the Tahoe area, we welcome you as well. We will begin our meeting with a flag salute led by Supervisor Ullrich.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, underground, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the county executive department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. Anyone may ask to address the consent items prior to the board taking action, and the item may be moved for discussion. Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion?
Supervisor, one of the items, item 13A, you'd like to postpone a move to the 24th. We have a couple of final items that need to be resolved prior to bringing this forward for your consideration.
Any objection to that from board members? All righty, that's fine. And then, Mr. Garabedian, did you have an item that you wanted?
I do, four items. They're all related, as near as I can tell. Items 17B, 17C, 17P, and 17Q. These have to do with the, as I understand it, taking money for pedestrian improvements on 49 and putting them into the circles for Bell Road and I-80.
Okay, so, any other items requested to be pulled from the consent? All righty, I'll ask for approval of the remaining items.
(inaudible).
It's been moved and seconded to approve the remaining items on consent calendar. There's no need to take action on 13A, that's, we've already resolved that. So, we'll take up 17B.
Thank you.
We need a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, roll call vote.
Duran?
Yes.
Weigand?
Yes.
Euler?
Montgomery?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes, thank you. Now...
Good morning. Mike Garabedian for Placer Group Sierra Club. I have several questions and a comment. I'm wondering, now, this is taking some or all, I'm not clear, funds away from Highway 49 pedestrian improvements. I'm wondering if there are other pedestrian improvements left after this.
All right. Ken or Kevin, can you address that for us, please?
Good morning, Kevin Ordway, Department of Public Works and Facilities. There were several projects in order for the same area on Highway 49. Both PCTPA and Caltrans have projects coming in to the same area where we were going to use these funds to construct pedestrian improvements, and whatever we put in would be ripped out by their projects in the near future. So, we chose to move them to another qualifying project in the area.
Okay, very good.
Are there, will there be any 49 pedestrian improvements?
Both PCTPA and Caltrans are working on constructing those as part of future projects.
So, did you want to move to 17C, Mr. Garabedian?
Well, this has to, all of them, so, how far in the future are the planned widening of 49 that interfere with the pedestrian?
Well, we were just beginning the design phase of ours, and in coordination with Caltrans, we found out they had projects in the same area. So, they're in the planning and design phase for their projects. I'm not exactly sure where they're at.
So, this postpones the pedestrian plans that were underway?
For the county, but not for PCTPA or Caltrans.
Right.
We were all at the same spot at the same time, basically.
Okay, and so, this is to shift monies through circles on both sides of Bell Road and I-80, eastbound, westbound?
Correct.
And this is to, because, for greenhouse gas emission saving circles, I guess, and so, how much greenhouse gas emission is it gonna?
So, they're...
Mr. Garabedian, you're probably better off having a conference with Kevin offsite, so he can answer your questions.
I'd be glad to do that. But our primary concern here is taking money from pedestrian uses and putting it into highway and street capacity issues. We think that money should stay allocated to pedestrian uses. It's not that we don't need the improvements in that interchange, which I'm sure everybody here uses all the time, but to take pedestrian-oriented funds and shift it into traffic, we don't agree with that.
Well, Mr. Ordway explained that we're collaborating with the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency and Caltrans to ensure that we're moving in concert with these types of improvements.
Well, we don't think you should take pedestrian funds for the capacity improvement.
And might I...
Other pedestrian improvements?
If you do, then why won't you be able to the department and tell them what your concerns are? Because, as they said...
The monies and the projects that were set up are going to be ripped out, so let's work together and try to get this resolved.
Yes, and you shouldn't allocate those pedestrian funds today to a different use. You should keep, hold on, hold them today so we can have those talks. Thank you.
Ken?
Just for a point of clarity, Ken Graham, Department of Public Works and Facilities, we're not talking about pedestrian funds, they are congestion mitigation and air quality funds.
Same, yeah, right.
Pedestrian is one allowable use for those, but there are others. Bell Road Highway, or, excuse me, Bell Road and Interstate 80, long-term issue with that interchange, backing up traffic, trying to get rid of some of the congestion at that intersection. We did a report several years ago, identified this project, no funding. We have the opportunity here, since we're going to get these other improvements done regardless, to put this money into something we think has a long-term benefit for the North Auburn community. So, I just want to make sure it's clear, they're not pedestrian funds, but pedestrian projects aren't allowable use.
Well, anyway, I think our concern is clear about, we don't know when now, pedestrian, there seems to be a delay in the pedestrian safety along 49, is what seems to be the result.
And I think what we're hearing is there is not a delay in the pedestrian projects. Instead of being moved forward by Placer County, they're going to be moved forward by our partners at PCTPA and Caltrans.
Without county money?
They don't need the county money because they have already allocated funds for that.
It is a state highway.
Yeah.
And so, normally, they would be the first call for those types of improvements. Because they hadn't historically, we took some of the leadership to try to do that with your board's support. Now, I think we're talking about, they are taking responsibility for that. Let's move these improvements in dollars to somewhere that could provide additional benefit.
Okay, good.
Glad we could discuss this.
Right, thank you. So, anybody else want to discuss this item? And I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval of the remaining items.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the remaining items. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. Thank you. Now is the time for public comment. Persons may address the board on items not on this agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes per person, since the time allotted for public comment is 15 minutes. If all comments cannot be heard within the 15-minute time limit, the public comment period will be taken up at the end of the regular session. The board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name's Donna Williams. Second-generation Californian, and the reason that I'm here is I notice if we look up here, it says County of Placer, State of California, California flag, Placer County flag, United States flag. There isn't anything I see here that says that we're actually a sanctuary state. And so, I really would like to ask our board members to go ahead and declare Placer County a non-sanctuary county. It just, it doesn't make any sense to me, that if you don't have a land of laws, which we do when we salute the flag, and you base all but on who we are. If we don't stand up and make comments, I feel like we're like a bunch of lemons going over this cliff, because we're not paying attention. This is our country. These are the rules we have to live by. So, we have to get up and stand up. So, I'm requesting that the Board of Placer County vote Placer County as a non-sanctuary county. We've got to stand up. We have so many good things, like, here, I look like I come out of the Goodwill over there on 49, but this morning, I've already been up and opened a Placer County gate, and I work on trails and stuff, and I see what a great country we have and what a great state. You know, I'm a 35-year-old ICU nurse, and I've been out and worked on the trails, I've worked, I've been on Placer County Search and Rescue Mounted Unit. I mean, we have so much here, we have to protect it, and it just has to be understanding a rule of law. And that's what we're asking. And that's how I feel, obviously, a little strongly about it. I just wanted to make sure that you understood it, and I would be very encouraged to see that you all voted to vote that Placer County is a non-sanctuary county. You're paid by the, by all these people out here with our taxes and stuff to represent us, and that's what I'm asking you to do.
Supervisor Ullrich.
Yeah, Donna, thank you. We've received a number of emails along those lines. Appreciate your comments. We heard from folks at the last meeting as well. Had a conversation with the chairman and our CEO prior to this board meeting last week, and our CEO actually has a suggestion on how we intend to have a conversation around this. So, at this time, Todd, if you would...
Yes, Supervisor, there has been a request to have a conversation about this with, really with our sheriff's office about impacts regarding the SB 54 legislation. And so, what I'd really like to do is even have some concurrence that you collectively as a board would like to have that conversation. If so, I'll arrange it with the sheriff at a future date to talk about those impacts.
And I raised the issue in the context, not necessarily of the legal arguments around whether the state can usurp federal primacy on the issue of naturalization, which I don't believe they can, but clearly, that will be, is being played out in the courts. But really, I think it's important for our board to understand what are the real-world impacts of legislation passed at the state level that we are asked to implement, and what does it do to us from a cost driver standpoint? I mean, we've railed appropriately so against unfunded mandates at this board for years, and I look at this as yet another unfunded mandate when we're looking at having to implement this policy. And so, what I'd like to do is have our sheriff come at our next meeting and explain to us what this has meant in terms of their change in procedures, what it means to us in terms of cost and operation of our jail facilities, and possibly even our probation procedures as well, just so we have a full understanding of what the implementation of this law actually means. So, that was my request to the chairman and to the CEO.
Ms. Williams, rest assured that the county sheriff is complying with the immigration laws. He's upholding his oath that he took when he took office, excuse me, and we're comfortable with his position. So, we'll welcome that conversation, I'm sorry, we'll welcome the conversation, but the sheriff is upholding the oath that he took to take this office, as we all are here on the board. So, thank you. Any other public comment?
Was there a... Was that a board agreement to put this on?
I think we should discuss that with the chair individually. I mean, with the CEO individually.
Good morning. Scott Vaughn, Granite Bay. As always, you have a packet. You should already have this, since your lawyer, Mr. Carden, has penned an article for what we deem as, first of all, I'm just going to read something, mini-storage per your codes is not allowed in a residential neighborhood. I've been here for seven weeks, I'll be here for 15, 20, 30, who knows how many more weeks I'll be here, because I think it's important. And my home lies in a residential district with now 100,000 square foot of mini-storage facility down a residential area. 15 acres of paved parking, 650, you've heard it all before, I don't really have to repeat it. But what we did is we're following your rules. You asked for the ruled law and that it be followed, and you're going to uphold that. We followed your code. You issued a business license that we said is not zoned correctly. We, look at the pages we have before you. We had our lawyer highlight why the business license should be denied, and we issued an appeal per your county codes. That appeal says that you should meet and talk about why it should be denied or granted. Mr. Carden wrote a document back. I've underlined both sections, saying he's denying it because we didn't identify why we asked for the appeal. That's what it says, it's underlined. That's why he denied it. That is categorically per both documents filed. It's right in there, it says, "We denied it because it doesn't meet zoning laws." And so, here we are, we're going to follow the laws, we've sworn all these things, but yet, I come to you week after week after week, and nothing happens. Where's the transparency? Ms. Wyantown's office is responsible for determining land use compatibility through the Public Records Act of California, which guarantees public information is provided on request. We have multiple avenues and multiple times requested a very black-and-white and public-specific zoning ordinance that was being used to determine land use compatibility for a valid business license, not produced. And now, what do we get from you guys? Sue us. That's what you said, do a writ, sue us. So, now, the county is telling its residents, the only way we can get an answer is sue. How is that an acceptable response from a governing body? Sue. So, are you just trying to wait us out, make us spend a lot of money? You said that the board can't take action. I just heard an issue where you're taking action. You just said, "We're going to go ahead and meet with the..." Well, that's not taking, okay, fair enough. It sounded like you were doing some discussions on the thing that was previously discussed.
Individually with the CEO.
Okay. Well, I have noticed that the county has transferred $750,000 to a legal fund, you're asking people to sue you, and then you wonder, "Why are the residents upset?" All right? So, I've been here for like the seven weeks. We met with Mr. Euler, thank you for having our meeting in your office, your county council. We didn't get through all the items for the 12 facts about asking Commissioner Moss to be removed. Didn't get through them. I sent an email asking for another meeting, I'm hoping to hear soon, and the county orders things.
Did you want to respond to this?
Okay, can I just say one or two other things? Mr. Holmes, I've asked you to be put on the agenda. No response. This board also committed to taking the allegations seriously and getting back. We've heard nothing. Nothing.
Wait a minute. Well, that's what Jerry's going to comment.
Yeah, I did send a letter to the council for these individuals, and I stand by my legal opinion, there is no county process for an appeal in the circumstances that they cited. Now, they seem to object to, when there's a disagreement, filing a lawsuit, because that's what happens when there's a disagreement on the law, and there is in this case. And they did file a lawsuit initially, and the court has issued its decision on that lawsuit, and the court denied their first cause of action. The court found that the mini-storage is a valid use of land based on the Tree Lake Master Plan and use permit and its modifications. The second cause of action for violation of planning and zoning, the petitioners in that case did not even brief that issue. So, we argued it should be dismissed because it was waived by the petitioners. The court, taking the cautious approach, set it for May 22nd for further briefing on that issue and setting of a trial date, and we're confident that the county's going to prevail on that issue also. This isn't an issue of transparency when there's a disagreement about the law, and the county asks you to follow the proper process when there's a disagreement on the laws, to go through the courts. And the courts made a decision in that case, and you still contend that the court made the wrong decision. Well, there's a process for that, too. There's a court of appeal that is there for those kinds of disputes.
So, am I not allowed to respond? Because that was not the, the decision was that for a final map from 1999 is what they said the cup was for.
This is not the place to argue.
Yeah.
Well, you said some things that are not necessarily 100% true, so I didn't want to let that go.
Supervisor Ullrich, did you?
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Call.
Morning.
Morning, gentlemen and ladies. Bradley Kellner from Granite Bay. I just, I also left a one-page letter, two-page letter with you guys, and the purpose of that was, on March 13th, I also made a complaint regarding the license. But in that complaint, I also discussed a couple of other items. One was the expansion of the facility to include all commercial vehicles and commercial businesses from anywhere. And it's become a problem because they've taken the new commercial aspect of this to a different level, and it's become a truck facility now with semi-trucks. That's right, full-on, 55 feet of trailer bed, 53 feet of trailer bed, plus the cab, it's a 70-foot vehicle coming down our roads. And that is currently ongoing. Right now, there is parked in there a 53-foot semi-truck. And yesterday, or a couple days ago, trucks are going in and out. So, it's going to be a problem because we have a hill and a curve and everything else, and there's going to be an issue. And to my knowledge, this land was not dedicated for a commercial trucking facility. It was meant for RV, boat, and storage for residences, not for commercial use, not granted to commercial use anywhere at any time. And now, we've got a trucking facility operating out of this and coming down our street. And it's going to be a matter of time before something else is going to happen, because these things are weighing in at 25 tons, and they're, we're going to have a problem. And some kid or some dog's going to run out in the street, and I'm going to sit here and say, "No, Your Honor, I told these guys that we shouldn't have this, and nothing has been done. Not a single word, no comment, no nothing." So, this, that was, we commented on this before. I wrote you on the 13th, I wrote a letter and sent it in to the board, and here we are, and we don't have any action, any anything, and we've got semi-trucks rolling through our residential neighborhood. I wish you could do a little something about it. Thank you.
Supervisor Ullrich, did you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You know, our board has now, as Mr. Vaughn has reminded us, sat here for a number of meetings and heard the complaint that we are not responding, that we're meeting their concerns with silence. And the fact of the matter is, that's just not true, Scott. Whether it's the planning department, county council's office, me, there has been all kinds of communication with you folks. I think you're confusing not getting answers with not getting the answers you want. And the simple fact of the matter is that when we sat in my office, we went through 12 different, 13 different items that you guys raised. County council, two people representing county council's office had to first differentiate, are these subject to the ongoing litigation that you folks have raised, and therefore, we can't have conversations about them? And then, those items that were not subject to the ongoing litigation, we did have extensive conversations about. And you, number one, you continue to raise things that are outside of the county's authority when you talk about the issues associated with the illegal fill and all the rest, and that's, again, asked and answered. The appropriate state regulatory agencies did engage, they issued their determination, fined whatever was paid by the appropriate agent, that's been taken care of. Each one of these things that you've raised, the county has given you an answer. You don't like the answer, I get it, but we've given you an answer. Now, the thrust of your argument has always been, and as you just represented here today, has always been that we, as the board, didn't have the authority to put the storage next to residential. Clearly, the court seems to be indicating otherwise. Now, to the extent, as I told you in that meeting, and the other folks that were some of that meeting, to the extent that there are operational issues with the storage that we can have a conversation about, go to the owner and say, operationally, here are some of the concerns that we're hearing from the neighbors, how can we address these concerns in order to be a better neighbor? I committed to you then, I commit to you today, we will have those conversations. In fact, the very morning that we received the court's opinion on the first cause of action, I picked up the phone, I called county council's office, I said, "Now that we've got this, can I engage with the owner of the mini-storage to start having a conversation about some of these operational issues the neighbors have raised?" County council's advice was, "You should probably wait until the second cause of action is ruled upon sometime, we expect in June, perhaps?"
Should be June.
In June. Immediately upon having that conversation with county council, I called the operator, and I said, "This is the conversation I just had with county council. This is the conversation I want to initiate with you, so be prepared that once we have the second cause of action ruled on, I want to sit down with the neighbors and speak to the operational issues that you folks have raised, and this one that was filed by Mr. Kellner today would certainly fit into that." So, I committed to you then. We will address the operational issues to make the neighbor as good a neighbor as possible, but I'm really, I don't appreciate the representation that you've made verbally and in writing on numerous occasions, that we are not responding to your claims. We are through the court, obviously, and we are through my office, and we are through the planning department, and once we finally get your litigation resolved, then we can address the operational issues that you are raising, have been raising.
So, Mr. Chair, may I have one of them or both come back and respond to that? Yeah. If, you need to come to the microphone, got to have you on the record.
I just wanted to clarify, so, until sometime in June, or then if it gets appealed sometime two or three years from now, we can expect an increase in trucks coming down our road?
Don't, don't, wait two issues. So, code enforcement will continue to do code enforcement's job that they have done all along and analyze each and every complaint that you file from an operational standpoint. They will make a determination as to whether or not the current operation meets county code. That has been going on, that will continue to go on. What I have engaged the operator on is, beyond what code enforcement says and the county says is permissible, are you voluntarily willing to limit some of your operations to address some of these concerns? The operator has indicated to me he's willing to have that conversation. So, code enforcement will continue to do what code enforcement has done all along throughout this proceeding, and that is take each and every one of the numerous complaints that you filed about the operation, evaluate those complaints, come up with a determination. If, in fact, there's a violation, they will follow through, as they have, to make sure that that violation is taken care of. But beyond that, what I'm saying is, I have heard the neighbors' concerns, I want to work with the operator and the neighbors, once we get this legal thing resolved, to figure out what can we do to make sure that in my, what I assume will be the final determination, where the courts will say, "Yes, in fact, you will be neighbors going forward." How can we make that relationship work? That's what I'm saying.
If we could just take the gestation period, which seems to be 90, 100, 200 days for the response from code enforcement, and reduce that down so we don't have a few deaths by semi-trucks in the meantime?
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to finally talk about some of these items, and I will say, we did have a meeting.
Well, I was going to say, not finally, we've talked about them before, you and I have.
Yes, but we didn't get through all of them. We didn't, and you, well, we didn't get through all 12, and you know.
No, we, you're right, county council said we can't talk about a number of them.
Well, we didn't get through open space, and so, that was a big issue.
Again, asked and answered. You've asked the question about the open space determination, you've already gotten an answer back from planning. So, my concern is when you stand up here and say you're not getting answers. The fact of the matter is you are getting, yes, I saw the written communication that's...
I'll look it up, I'll be happy.
I saw the written communication that said, "That storage area was never calculated as part of the original open space."
It's in the list for the EIR as listed as open space? Okay, all right.
Sorry.
All right, the other thing is, I just want to make sure that there are other open items that haven't talked. We called for the removal and a vote, and we haven't had that. And you have admitted five or six things that he did that we put in our allegations that were in either misdemeanors or conflict of interest. Your county admitted it. So, now, have the vote. That's all I'm asking, have the vote. If you turn it down, at least it's on record, you had the vote.
Any other public comment?
Good morning, Bree McCullum, Forest Hill, Forest Hill Swimming and Recreation. I have a big complaint, I'm just kidding, I wanted to stand up here and thank the Board of Supervisors for approving the use of park dedication fees at our community pool. It is going to be up and running, Regina, for our youth and our seniors and all the families that visit Forest Hill and enjoy the refreshing waters, and I wanted to thank you, I'm a pregnant and emotional woman. And, oh, you don't? I just saw some, it was exciting. But I wanted to get up and thank you for all of the hard work, all the county representatives that have helped assist my pool board to get this here today and get construction started.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Regina? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and bring it down for, bring it back to board member or county executive reports, any board member reports? Supervisor Ullrich, your light is on.
Oh, sorry.
CEO report, no.
The only item I would ask for consideration, postpone, is under the county executive, item four, the transient occupancy tax appeal with Grand LeBach, and we're continuing to move forward to get an agreement worked out, I'd ask for a continuance to a future date, if that's agreeable to the board.
Sure, I think it's okay. Yeah, right. I do have a report, a couple of weeks ago, we lost a former county supervisor, George Bellin, passed away, his wife passed away just a couple, about ten days before that, and he served on here for four years. He was very opposed to the Auburn Dam, but he was really for conservation, and he's laid some of the groundwork for our board to continue that with our Placer Legacy Program, and he was a very gracious gentleman. So, today, we will be adjourning our board meeting in his memory. Well, now it's time for our nine oh five Board of Supervisors proclamation, the big day of giving. It's not funny.
It is.
What?
It may not be funny, but the way you've said it.
Oh, no, it's not. Finally. Oh, good, they made it kinda big. Is anybody gonna come forward so I can read this proclamation, and then come down and present it to you? All righty, in the matter of a proclamation recognizing May third, twenty eighteen, as the big day of giving in the county of Placer, whereas on May third, communities across the United States are participating in a Give Local America event in which community foundations enjoy, encourage charitable giving in their regions. Whereas the Sacramento Region Community Foundation, a trusted resource for contributing to local and regional organizations, will host the Fourth Annual Big Day of Giving on May third, twenty eighteen, in partnership with local and regional businesses and community leaders. And whereas, five hundred eighty-five nonprofits throughout the four-county Sacramento region will participate in the Big Day of Giving, over one hundred of which are located in Placer County, serving county residents. And whereas, the Big Day of Giving is an opportunity for Placer County residents to show their community pride through supporting the good work of our local nonprofits. And whereas, philanthropic investment helps hard-working nonprofits make an impact on the causes that affect us all, and provides donors with a sense of ownership and pride in their community. Now let it be known that the above proclamation was truly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the county of Placer, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County. And I'll bring this down to you, congratulations, we'll bring this down to you, and you can make a few comments.
Hi.
Hi.
Good.
So who's gonna, here, who's gonna hold this? No, we got people.
One, two, three.
Now, do you wanna take a picture?
We'll get the other one.
We'll get the, okay.
You wanna say a few words?
Just wanna thank the Board of Supervisors for this proclamation, May, May third is Big Day of Giving this year. This is actually our fifth year, and through the years, the Big Day of Giving has raised over twenty-three million dollars for local nonprofits in our region. Like the proclamation mentioned, a hundred of those are within Placer County, and last year, over half a million dollars was raised by those nonprofits for Placer County, so that continues to make a huge difference in our region for those that are serving the region. So, thank you very much, and give on Big Day of Giving, May third, and there are lots of nonprofits to choose from, and the website's bigdayofgiving.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, you know, it's, it's just amazing how many nonprofits we have that provide these services to our residents, and sometimes we forget about how many there are. If you start listing them all, you'd be there for a couple hours, but I really appreciate this opportunity to bring this forward for you, so thank you.
And can we just announce who they are, they're from some of the nonprofits representing today?
Yeah, I'm Carol Walker with Placer Land Trust, and we've raised four hundred and seventy-seven thousand to help protect our natural and agricultural lands here in Placer County, just through the Big Day of Giving over the last four years, so thank you so much for your support.
Yeah, Carol, the rest of us nonprofits are jealous of how well you guys do our Big Day of Giving, by the way.
Good morning, Cindy Picos with the Placer Breast Cancer Foundation, thank you.
Hi.
Rick Larky, North State Building Industry Foundation, we serve youth and adults, helping prepare them to go to work, and help place them, especially in the construction industry. So, we thank you for the recognition and the support.
Thank you. Okay, then, now we'll move to a biting item. Placer Mosquito Vector Control District, an update on the vendor-borne diseases within Placer County. Hello there.
Good morning, thank you very much, I'm Joel Bitner, the General Manager of Placer Mosquito and Vector Control District, and it's this time again, giving the, our annual updates on the beginning of mosquito and vector in West Nile season. So, I have a short presentation for you, giving you some updates. So, I'm not Ada Baros, I, I took her place today.
Oh, you're not.
So, how do I, oh, right here.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, our, our mission continues to effectively and efficiently manage the risk from vectors of vector-borne disease in Placer County. We've been operating in Placer County since two thousand and one, and some of our supervisors here are instrumental in getting our district started. We use what's called integrated vector management, and in short, we, we base everything we do on data and science, and make judicious and effective decisions on protecting people. So, our, our focus is really to limit the risk of mosquito bites and disease, not necessarily to eradicate every mosquito there, there is, although we might want to, that's not without its own downside. So, we try to just keep people as, as, as safe as we can, and we ask them to help us, help them, and we'll get more to that. Here's some stats, as usual, things change every year, with the weather, with the amount of agriculture we have in western Placer, the amount of snowpack we have in eastern Placer, all of those things play into how many mosquitoes you might see this year. This year, up in the high country, since all the snow is melting and turning into water, it's probably gonna be better in terms of mosquitoes up there, and probably worse down here. This is from our state Department of Public Health, the blue regions are counties that had human cases of West Nile last year, and the green had incidents of West Nile found in mosquitoes or birds or, or other environmental surveillance, but not in humans. So, as you can see, Placer up there was green, but we didn't have any human cases, so, well, I'd like to take all the credit, a lot of it has to do with the weather as well, we do the best we can. So, here we go, that's human cases. Dead bird still is a very important surveillance technique that we use, we ask all the residents to please call in dead birds. Middle winter is less useful than, say, starting now. Yeah, so, we're looking for birds that may have died of West Nile, so we know that they had another cause of death, maybe not as important, but, exactly. We are focusing on the corvids, on crows and ravens and jays, and then the little birds around your house, finches and sparrows, ducks and great blue herons and, you know, barn owls, those are less important in terms of, as a spreader of West Nile. Okay? So, our continued challenges for this year is these invasive mosquitoes are still moving northward through California, last, at the end of last year, they were found in Merced County, so previous to that, it was down in Fresno, so they are kinda moving forward. They look like this, or like this. So, these are black and white mosquitoes that bite people more during the day, but also can be at nighttime. The biggest concern about this for us is that, right now, we have no mosquito vectors for a whole host of diseases like dengue and Zika and yellow fever and that sort, those sorts of things. Once these get here, we will. It's not to say that we will have those diseases, but we will have the capability, if someone picks up one of these diseases on a vacation and brings it back, the fact now that we don't have those mosquitoes that can transmit, it gives us some level of protection, and we want to ma- maintain that level of protection. My staff has spent a lot of time working with Placer County Public Health to do a lot of preparedness, and we have a response plan where we, at this point, are looking to try to detect these very, very early by engaging the public and also doing some trapping, and then take a very, very strong approach to try to eradicate anything that might come in initially, and may, may not work. In other places, that hasn't worked so well, but the fact that we don't have them yet is actually promising. So, we're gonna try to keep them out of Placer County as long as we can, and then we do have plans to switch over to kinda maintenance and, and do other things if we can't get rid of them. Okay? There's some very exciting things that we're doing, you know, Placer County mosquito and vector control is really taking the lead statewide, and in some cases nationally, in terms of integrating technology and trying to be more efficient in how we perform our mosquito control and disease protection duties. One of the things that we're doing is using automated traps that we are partnering with a company from, oop, sorry, little, little too soon there. We're partnering with a company from Germany where we have traps that we can place out in the field, and then get that data about what kind of mosquitoes and how many there are wirelessly, so that reduces the number of times why people need to go out. Really what that means is we can put more traps out with the same number of people, so that's, that's really good. The other really exciting thing is drones. So, we have been using drones, and this is a quick little video of one of our mission types, to actually detect mosquito larvae, those little squiggly things are mosquito larvae up there, and you're seeing that from a live feed, well, videoed live feed, from a drone through underwater camera. So, this is really, this is kinda groundbreaking, a lot in the literature of where mosquito larvae are found are based on where you can reach them with a stick with a cup on the end. So, this really takes it to the next level, and makes, it's gonna make it very interesting how we can utilize this information to do more targeted and precision control measures. Up in, up in Lake Tahoe area, this is gonna be really good, because we can look for those snowmelt, those big snowmelt pools, and then potentially even go out and do a spot treatment with a drone without having to tromp out through the snow or the meadow or the sensitive habitat. And then down in, in the valley, similarly, when we have that one field that's flooding or something like that, we can identify it quickly with the drone, and then we can go, go take care of it. So, we have reached out to all the law enforcement and kinda the dispatchers throughout the county where we're operating this, so they know where, that we're flying drones, we know what they look like, we, we provided them with information to, to, in case we have some concerned public out there, but we are doing this, we are not using this at this point around residential areas, so we are trying to be very cognizant of privacy concerns, so, but we are finding some really, really good use for that, and I think we'll all benefit from that. And, okay, and that, that's all I have, we did provide you with some information, and there's a little green bag, that's our new tick kit. So, we are in the midst of tick season, so in there, there's some information on ticks and some repellent and other information.
Well, we're gonna be back in DC later, so that will be very helpful.
Great, yeah, they're, they have those, those really bad ones back there, so, well, your repellent, for sure.
Any other comments from board?
No worries.
Any other comments from board members? I just wanna thank you for the response, we've had several people calling in to our office about this, and your office has been very responsive to those, those concerns. And are mosquito fish available through your office, is that-
Right, so mosquito fish are, we treat them like, like a pesticide, honestly, so if someone thinks that they have an issue, they have a pond, or they're seeing mosquitoes, really we wanna focus people on, are you getting bitten? We'll go out and we'll check it, and we'll make the right determination of where fish should go or not go, and those sorts of things. They are, you know, we don't want fish just willy-nilly, so we, we place them in the appropriate places.
All right. Anybody from the audience have a question for this gentleman? All right.
I'd just like to ask, what, what sort of treatments do you use particularly or specifically for mosquito larvae?
For mosquito larvae, so this is the aquatic stage of the mosquitoes, we're primarily using, there's three main, main materials, that one is a bacteria, it's called Bacillus thuringiensis, or BTI, it's a soil-borne bacteria, it's very specific to mosquitoes, so that's what we primarily use. We use them in kinda small urban areas, we use them in the rice fields, so it, it works really well, and that's our preferred target life stage. We also, in catch basins, we use a growth regulator for, for mosquitoes, so unless you're a mosquito and molt, it's not acting on that physiology, and that's become actually very, very useful, actually, over the past three years, we've kinda ridden the, the drought and really collapsed one pa- one population of mosquitoes, the Culex pippians, which previously had been the most responsible for West Nile transmission, so, I think we're doing a really good job there in keeping those mosquitoes that are right around where people live, to a bare minimum. And then the other one is another biological, it's called spinosid, and we use that more in specific areas like Lincoln log decks and some of these other places where we have kind of bigger problems, and we need to, to use something, use something different.
Well, thank you for your effort, I wanna echo Chairman Holmes' comments, and just say, you know, the feedback that I get from the residents of the fifth district is very positive around mosquito and vector control, and, you know, I will just say it's one of the things on my tax bill that I'm always happy to see and pay, so thank you.
Oh, I appreciate, and we have another tax starting up in your, your neck of the woods.
Fantastic!
Just, just to mention that, and we'll be, we'll be expanding our tick work, actually, in eastern Placer over the next coming year, so, anyway.
All right. Oh, yeah, come on forward, you have to come forward, yes, please.
Hello.
Hello.
I've actually been kinda concerned about this, because I have a stream in my yard, and it runs, you know, during the winter, and then it stops to stagnated water in the summer. Is there anything that I can do to put in the water that would be safe environmentally or anything?
We, we recommend you don't try to do anything yourself, because we have, you know, we have the, the proper materials and expertise to do that. If you're seeing adult mosquitoes in your area and you're getting bitten, just give us a call, and we'll have a tech come out.
Okay.
More than likely, if it's a stream, we know it's there, and sometimes stuff happens in between when we're checking, so that's helpful.
So, just give you a call?
Just give us a call, or go on our website.
Miss, we, miss, we need your name for the record.
Jennifer Gomes.
All right, thank you, all right.
Yeah, plastermosquito.org has a lot of the information and a link to get a, to let us know to report a problem, so feel free to use that.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you all very much.
We'll now move to our nine twenty timed items. The annual update from the North Tahoe Business Association, Mr. Jansen and Ms. Doyle.
Pardon me. Good morning, Chair Holmes, members of the board, my name is Jonathan Jansen, Management Analyst with the County Executive Office up in North Lake Tahoe. I'm here today to introduce Joy Doyle, the Executive Director of the North Tahoe Business Association, so she may provide your board with an annual update as required by their contract with Placer County. The North Tahoe Business Association implements specific tasks and initiatives in pursuit of economic development, business retention and retention, and community sustainability in the Kings Beach, Tahoe Vista, and Carnelian Bay communities. The county has contracted with the NTBA to provide these services in the current fiscal year. Looking forward in June of this year, the County Executive Office will be bringing a contract with the NTBA in the next fiscal year forward for your consideration. The contract will continue the county's partnership with the NTBA, support economic development initiatives, and further implement the Main Street program. Joy has lived in the Carnelian Bay community with her husband and family since nineteen ninety, and has an extensive background in marketing, event sponsorship, or pardon me, actually, that's correct, event sp- sponsorship and building relationships within this region. She has been the NTBA's Executive Director since September of two thousand and eleven, and Joy has been a valuable and active member within these communities, and her leadership has provided a positive influence to the region. Without further ado, Joy Doyle of the North Tahoe Business Association.
Thanks, Jonathan. Good morning, Joy, thanks for being here.
Good morning, everyone, thanks-
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, JJ, Jonathan. Have to be all strict here. And Chairman Holmes, honorable members of the board, Jennifer, of course, and Mr. Leopold. I'm excited to present to you today about North Tahoe Business Association, provide you with some very, very basic information for Mr. Leopold's benefit, and to let you know what we've been up to, up to recently, and we have planned in the year ahead. So, first, a few basics. NTBA is a nonprofit, member-based organization. We were founded in 1979. Our mission, to improve economic vitality and quality of life in the communities of North Lake Tahoe. Our purpose is twofold. One, to support businesses through marketing, communications, resources, networking, and training. And two, to market NTBA's district as vibrant and a unique sense of place. When I talk about marketing today, I'm talking about in-market marketing. So, we are focused, because of the size of our budget, to target visitors once they are in our area. So, not destination marketing. We serve the district between Carnelian Bay and Crystal Bay with Kings Beach as our main commercial corridor. NTBA has been partnering with Placer County to successfully implement the Main Street approach since 2004. We effectively leverage your investment with thousands of hours of volunteer support, tens of thousands of dollars raised from external sources, and through increased organizational capacity. At our core is our members. We are proud that our membership has grown 37% since 2009. We ended 2017 with ironically, 217 members, which unfortunately was a slight decrease, a 1.8% decrease. However, because we increased membership dues in late 2016, we actually saw an increase in membership revenue. So, positive all the way around. Now, a few recent highlights and accomplishments. I'm going to start with our promotions, marketing, and events focus area first. Last year, we completely redesigned our website. This was a, quite a significant undertaking for our small staff and our promotions and marketing committee, and we launched it in June. So far, it's performing very, very well. I look forward to providing you with those stats once we've completed a full year. NTBA is well-known and loved for the community events that we put on. Events are a main way that we market our district as they build awareness and drive visitation to our area. Each year, the complexity and resources required to produce events increases. Despite this, our events receive generous support, which is an important revenue source, and events create lasting memories for area visitors. Our event attendance and gross revenues are at an all-time high, I'm happy to report. And now, with a fully functioning, let's get this, oh, shoot. Let me back that up. Got some animation here. Come on. Is it going to work? Let's try this again. And now, with a fully functioning highway and revitalized streetscape amenities, plus North Tahoe's best beaches, the word is out. Kings Beach is desirable. It's a fun place to play, shop, and dine. And according to the anecdotal feedback we got this summer, visitation and business volumes were very, very strong, and optimism was super-duper high. The winter months, however, is when our business, community, and Main Street business volumes suffer because these folks and NTBA frankly have to compete with the mountain resorts. What do people want to do in the winter? They want to ski, and they want to snowboard. I get it. I, I love to do that, too. But, our businesses and NTBA is tasked with making sure that Kings Beach and the North Shore communities are marketed and talked about in the winter months. This has been something we've worked on for quite a while. As with my marketing background, this has been a tough nut to crack, but I'm pleased to report that after much collaboration with Kings Beach retailers and restaurants, in January, we launched a new winter promotion called Get Some More Saturdays. It's a shop and dine promotion, and it happens après ski. So, I'm going to explain it to you. On four select winter Saturdays throughout Kings Beach, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., there were 13 participating businesses, eateries, and shops. And when participants went into those shops and dining establishments, they received something extra, something unexpected. We didn't promote what that was. You had to go into the business to find out what that was. And as they went business to business, they tracked their visits on a play card, which was redeemed for raffle tickets and free some more kits at an outdoor gathering area. And we had some lovely heaters and fire pits in case the weather was inclement, which it was quite a few of the four. Attendees had, had a chance to win over $3,000 worth of prizes that were donated by the participating businesses. The net of all of that was we actually tracked 1,334 visits into participating businesses, and we finally had a very positive winter message to put out in the winter months when, really, we, as a district, kind of went silent, and, and our businesses really needed our help. We're thrilled with our first-year results. We went into it knowing that we were going to commit to the promotion for three years. So, next week, we're having our first meeting for year two. So, exciting stuff happening there. Now, I'm going to switch to our economic vitality focus area. Because we are asked to advocate or comment on community projects from time to time, it's important for, for our organization to develop an advocacy policy. Again, this is something we've talked about for years, but last year, we did adopt an advocacy policy. It ensures alignment with our mission and provides us time to survey our members. It allows us to have a voice, represent our organization, our members, and hopefully the broader North Lake Tahoe business community. We tested the policy last year. It worked very well. And additionally, we shared it with other organizations. When they found out that we had an advocacy policy, they wanted to develop one, too. We're like, here's ours. Go ahead and copy it or adapt it for your needs. So, we're happy to be a leader in that arena. And now, for some plans for the remainder of this year and into 2019. On the heels of creating the Kings Beach Art Walk, we continue to stay very involved in bringing public art to North Lake Tahoe and to the Kings Beach roundabouts. I've excitedly reported to your board for many years now that the art was coming soon. The art was coming soon, but due to a series of complicated circumstances, there have been quite a few setbacks. However, through the perseverance of Tahoe Public Art, which I have the pleasure of serving on that board, and due to your staff, I want to publicly recognize and thank both Jennifer Merchant and Dan LaPlante for their dedication to this project. It has been a doozy, I think we'd all admit. And with your board's approval later today, we are looking forward to scheduling installation very, very soon. So, I'm very excited about that. Let's get art right there.
All right.
So, as a dynamic organization, we forever evolve and expand our services and scopes to, to benefit the county, our members, and the community. In the year ahead, in addition to supporting our members, marketing our district, and all our grassroots Main Street efforts, we plan to do several things. Number one, create a new Main Street Adopt a Section Year-Round Cleanliness Program. We'll see how that goes. Launch a new roofline LED lighting program in downtown Kings Beach, which we're hopeful that Kings Beach business and property owners, as well as the grant that we just submitted, the Tourism Master Plan Grant that we just submitted, will support. Create a new Choose Lake Tahoe webpage on our site to encourage people to bring their businesses to our area. Continue to optimize our website and hone our marketing efforts in this increasingly sophisticated space. Work with state parks and CTC on improving cleanliness at the Kings Beach State Recreation Area. Participate in the Mountain Housing Council to help solve the area's housing crisis, which is really having a devastating effect on our business community and our community overall. Execute, as JJ mentioned, a new performance-based contract with Placer County designed for maximum results and measurable benefits. And to continue our ongoing collaborative work with production of the North Lake Tahoe Truckee Leadership Program, participation in the Business Association and Chamber Collaborative, and to best serve our business community, provide leadership exploring opportunities for increased efficiency, reduced redundancy, and collaboration between our organization, Tahoe City Downtown Association, and the North Lake Tahoe Chamber of Commerce. Please, I know we don't have a lot of time today, so please contact me. I'm more than happy to share further information on any past or planned activities that we have. In conclusion, I want to sincerely thank and show my appreciation and my board's appreciation for your board's ongoing and strong support of the North Tahoe Business Association and our mission to improve economic vitality and quality of life in the communities of North Lake Tahoe. And now, I'll answer any questions or comments you may have.
I just want to thank you for your leadership and
Thank you.
Working collaboratively with the other, other agencies and with county, particularly on the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. And this is a great presentation.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Montgomery would like to say.
Yeah, Joy, I just want to say thank you so much to you and all your, your, your very small staff and lot of volunteers who do so much work with, you know, frankly, a fairly small amount of dollars. We really appreciate how much effort you put into it. And I didn't hear it, but you know I always ask, Friday night, music on the beach?
Oh, yeah. We got a great lineup every Friday night, except for one in the summer. So, it kicks off June 29th and runs through August 31st. Music on the beach, Kings Beach State Recreation Area. You're all invited!
And it's super fun.
And it's free.
I have to tell you, it's free. Yeah.
Thank you. And I'll see you in a couple weeks. Originally, I was planning on being out of town when you're in Tahoe in a couple weeks, but I'm going to be there, so I get to see you again.
All right. That's great.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Joy. Thanks, JJ.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now move to our 9:30 timed item. We're going to move this to a later date. And so, we will cross that one off. And then, we'll move to our 9:45 timed item, Health and Human Services, Update Various Homeless Initiatives. Jeff Brown. I just want to let everybody know that this is not about the RFP or a new, for someone to take over the shelter. This is mostly an update. But, you're certainly welcome to voice any comments during the public comment period. Thank you.
So, good morning, Chair Holmes, fellow board members, Jeff Brown, your Health and Human Services Director. I'm here with Kathy Denton, who is one of our department program managers in charge of many of our homeless programs. This morning, we would like to provide you with three updates related to homeless programs. First, we'd like to give you an update since November of last year on the progress of a few of our homeless programs. Secondly, we'd like to very briefly update you on the status of the RFP for Auburn Shelter Services. And then, third, we'd like to give you a summary of the January 2018 Homeless Point-in-Time Count. Oh. So, since 2017, we've contracted with Connecting Point. It's an organization from Nevada County to implement coordinated entry. This provides one telephone number that individuals can call to be initially assessed on the phone and to access services throughout our homeless safety net system. We also closed escrow on a 19-unit building in Roseville, 319 Main Street, in February. And those 19 units added to other units with Sutter Housing Dollars that we purchased last year. Total 34 beds that we were able to add to our continuum of care in the last 12 months. And then, we've added also five board and care beds and five medical respite beds in Auburn at the old children's receiving home. We've also expanded same-day mental health assessment and outpatient services in Auburn to better provide services to our Auburn residents. Primarily, these services were provided previously at Kirby Hills in South Placer. We secured funding from the state for social security disability application assistance. So, for individuals that are disabled, to try to help them with their applications and get the services that they, they, they deserve. And then, finally, we've secured another commitment from Sutter Housing for another investment in permanent housing. Last year, Sutter Health invested $1 million to provide housing for our whole-person care participants, and we're hoping to secure a similar investment this year. In terms of whole-person care, our newest program, one of our larger programs, the results on this slide indicate at the end of the first year what we had achieved. But, as you can see, this program is actually designed to serve frequent utilizers of service. So, these are individuals primarily homeless, but individuals that disproportionately utilize emergency rooms, utilize the jail, and utilize our psychiatric health facility. $20 million initiative over four years. This is really the, the outcome of the first year. I will say, we've seen reductions in hospital readmissions. We've reduced emergency department visits, and, and we've housed individuals. Now, that number shows 40, but as of today, we've actually housed 56 individuals in this program. And in our medical respite unit, we've served 15 individuals. So, to shift gears and just give you a brief update on the RFP for Auburn Shelter Services, we received two proposals. The panel is currently evaluating these proposals. They hope to hear presentations by the end of the month, and procurement is scheduled to bring a recommendation to your board in May. So, stay tuned. We will probably be, be back the second board meeting in May with a recommendation. And then, I'm going to turn the discussion regarding our most recent homeless count over to Kathy Denton.
Thank you, Jeff. The Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that each homeless continuum of care conduct a point-in-time homeless count using HUD-approved methodology in order to qualify for continuum of care funds. HUD specifies that a full count of both sheltered and unsheltered homeless must be done at least biannually one night during the last 10 days of January. The Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras, the Continuum of Care for Nevada and Placer Counties, has chosen to conduct both a sheltered and unsheltered count every year to gain the best understanding of our homeless population. A point-in-time count is only a snapshot reflecting the persons identified as homeless for one night, and it is not an absolute number. Many people move in and out of homelessness throughout the year. Persons were counted based on where they slept on the night of January 24th, 1908, sorry, 2018. Included in the count, unsheltered homeless, people living in their cars, outside, or other places meant for human habitation, and sheltered homeless, people living in emergency shelters, motels paid by agencies, and transitional housing for the homeless. Not included in the count, those temporarily living with family or friends, those living in permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, or institutions such as jails, foster care, or hospitals. Our total count was 584. This is a 12% reduction from 663 last year and is similar to past count numbers. We are significantly lower in the region and state. South Placer saw a decrease of 18%. We went from 443 to 280 individuals. Mid-Placer had a decrease of 4%, 299 to 288. We saw small numbers in East Placer, but we had a decrease of 24%, 21 people down to 16 people. We also saw a decrease in families, 27%, 48 to 35. A decrease in single adults, 5%, 498 to 477. Of the individuals who answered questions on our survey, 39% qualified as chronically homeless. Of the adults who provided responses to our questions, 41 identified as having a serious mental illness, 23% substance use disorder, 12% identified currently fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence. or attempting to flee domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, or stalking. This number was a decrease from last year because HUD changed the definition. Last year, it was any lifetime if you've experienced. This year, it is currently fleeing. And then we had 8% of veterans. I'll give you a little update on our methodology this year. Everyone who surveyed people had to attend a class. We had county staff, community partners, and law enforcement from every jurisdiction, including the Highway Patrol that participated. Every survey contained latitude and longitude of where people said they slept on the night of the count. And then our county GIS department overlaid the information over our county maps. We divided the county into three major sections. Eastern Placer included Truckee, Kings Beach, and Tahoe. Kings Beach counted 10. Tahoe City counted 6. We counted none, no individuals in the Truckee area for Placer, but there were 16, sorry, 18 on the Nevada side. Thought you would want to know that, Jennifer. Mid-Placer included Colfax and Forest Hill. So from Alta down to Penran in Mid-Placer, we saw 266 individuals in our unincorporated areas, 15 in Auburn, and 7 in Colfax. South Placer included Loomis, having 6 individuals. Rockland, 36. Roseville, 216. Lincoln, 14. And the unincorporated area, 8.
So I'd like to end on this slide. And you've seen this slide previously, but it's been updated since the last time you saw it. But this really looks at the increase in homelessness over a four-year period from 2013 to 2017. But it also looks at the number of homeless individuals per thousand residents, so a per capita measure. And as you can see, our numbers are very low. The new counties that I added to the list as a request of some individuals that attended the North Auburn MAC meeting were Eldorado County, Nevada County. And you can see that per capita, their numbers are about double what ours are. If we were to put the 2018 number of 584 on this chart, you know, our per capita goes down to just a little over 1.5. And so while we certainly have impacts, we certainly have a homeless population that we're working hard to work with and move them into recovery and into more sustainable lives, you can see compared to our neighbors or compared to other urban areas in California, we actually have relatively low numbers. And so I think we'll stop there. And Kathy and I are both available to answer any questions you may have.
So Jeff, tell me again why these folks requested that information. What was their endgame?
I think the perception was that perhaps
We were skewing the numbers or something?
No, I think perhaps that the homeless, the magnitude of the homeless issue in Placer County was actually larger than some of the surrounding counties. I think there's always the concern that if we offer services, some people think that that becomes a magnet to bring people in from other counties. But when we look at other counties, their issues are actually more significant than ours are.
So that data just doesn't bear out?
No, it does not.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jennifer?
Yeah, I can, just responding to Supervisor Duran, a number of folks at the North Auburn MAC were concerned that we were comparing ourselves essentially to highly urbanized areas and wanted to see how we compared with our more rural neighbors. Although we do have some urbanized areas, we do very much consider ourselves still a rural county. So that was really the request. I don't think there was particularly a concern that we were trying to skew numbers. I think people were really looking for more of an apples-to-apples comparison, which we achieved with these numbers. One of the things, Jeff, that you and I have talked about that I think is just critically important in this conversation is the changes of sheltered versus unsheltered folks over the years. It's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that in the past, we've had about 2/3 of our homeless population unsheltered, and about 1/3 sheltered, and that we've really kind of flipped that equation so that we now have about 2/3 sheltered and about 1/3 still unsheltered. Is that close to correct?
That's absolutely correct. And it's one of the things that is different in California as compared to the East Coast, where traditionally, they're able to shelter about 2/3 of their population on the East Coast. In California, the average is around 30% in any vicinity. In Los Angeles right now, they estimate 75% of all the homeless are unsheltered.
And the benefit, obviously, of getting people sheltered is that we are better able to connect them to services at that point.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? I see that the 41% of the homeless count have serious mental illness. How is it determined who has a serious mental illness?
That was a self-identification. And the second question to that is, is this impairing your ability to obtain and keep either employment or housing?
Okay. And it says here 23% have substance use disorder, but I would assume that the 41%, some of those are co-occurring as far as substance abuse?
Yes.
And so the 23% are just substance abuse?
Substance abuse only, yes.
Although they'll probably have
Well, substance, individual substance abuse only, yes.
So they'll probably have mental illness if they continue this process.
I think the thing we need, realizing that these are self-reported numbers, most people would estimate that the real numbers are probably much higher.
Right. Well, I want to thank you for what the whole person care grant and the apartment that we were buying. Roseville keeps some of these mentally ill and sheltered and monitored. And that's a way to move forward, and I'm very pleased with how we've gone forward with that. Any other questions from board members? Anyone in the audience? Ms. Bender, come forward.
Good morning, supervisors. I want to just take a couple of minutes, one, to thank all of the supervisors for meeting with Keith and I to discuss the views of the community in regards to the shelter bid. Before I do that, I want to thank Jeff and Kathy for the great information. It's really great to see that the homes and the additional residences that have been talked about for quite a while are finally, and I'm not placing judgment that it's been too slow. I think it's been pretty aggressive as far as that goes. So that's really good to hear that those are in place, as well as the additional assisted living, if you will, from hospital to shelter or out. So that's great. Before I comment about the bid, because I am going to comment about that, I just want to make note that I grew up in Los Alamos, the first non-sanctuary city, and am thrilled that you will at least make note to have a discussion with the sheriff about that possibility. Honestly, I'm not too optimistic about it, but I think it's the right thing to do to look at that and see what we can do, if anything, to move in that direction. Spent the last week there, sitting in the middle of Los Alamos, feeling really safe. That was a joke. Los Alamos is about this big. It's the second smallest city in the whole state. So, at last month's MAC meeting, where a couple of you were there and the rest weren't, understandably, we had a great turnout of the community members speaking regarding the shelter situation. And so they're not here today. Many of them worked. They wanted to be here. And so I felt the need and was requested to represent the desires of the community. So I'll make it short. We've all talked, but for the record, want to go ahead and say, several community members spoke, sharing their support for the Gathering Inn at the last meeting. Most of these are at work today and unable to speak. I'm here to tell you that the community request is still to award the bid to the Gathering Inn. I don't want the lack of bodies in the seats to misrepresent that desire. It's stronger than ever. We understand the panel approach and ask, as you make the final decision, that you take the community that you take the community input into consideration. You know, do we really want to just house our homeless, or do we want them to be on their feet and get into housing on their own? The Gathering Inn is a community-focused organization. Their guests regularly clean the city locations and others at the request of law enforcement and the community. They proactively work to be good neighbors. This is information that, you know, I just want to share and highlight because it may not necessarily be in a bid response. I don't know. Many North Auburn residents are embracing the Gathering Inn and offering to volunteer with their success. The community has changed from an anti-shelter to a volunteering to help mindset. We want to drive their success in our community with a new and trustworthy vendor. We want to help improve the community. This is our choice and our change of direction. We are tired of the status quo. We need a change, and we support the change. We believe this starts at the executive level and believe the Gathering Inn is the correct vendor to partner with our community to provide appropriate support to our homeless and getting them the services that they need and deserve. Those aren't words you heard from us a year ago. Get them out of here. We're good with them being here. Let's get them taken care of the best that we can with the community's support. And thank you for your time and the last couple of months, as well as today.
For the record, we need your name. And we know you're Betsy Bender from North Auburn, but we need
I'm Betsy Bender from Los Alamos and moved to Auburn in 1993. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, young man.
Good morning, Chair Holmes, honorable board members. I really want to thank you for your support in approaching homelessness from a multi-pronged approach. Your consistent support, your evolution on this issue has made a huge difference, obviously. A 12% reduction in homelessness. Did I give you my name?
No.
Sorry. Will Taylor, Placer Independent Resources Services. I just launched into my speech, sorry. I do want to thank you, though, for your support. And I want to congratulate Jeff Brown and Kathy Denton for their hard work and for their contribution of so many different programs that are making a difference in so many different ways. I encourage you to keep supporting this issue and really want to share my appreciation for the work you've done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to address the board? Yes, please come down. What's that one lady? Welcome.
Good morning. I'm Marguerite Sprague from Tahoe City. And I actually, hope this is crooked, just wanted to ask you guys a question. This is really interesting. I've never heard these figures before. You said you did your count in January, wasn't that right? I was just wondering if you do a warm weather count to see about changes. Being in Tahoe City, my perception is we have changes in our levels of warm weather.
Over the years, we have done a summer count, but the requirement, it's very intensive to do these counts, so the HUD requirements kind of is what drives us at this point.
Right, okay, good.
And Kathy, if I may, just in response to Marguerite's question, what we've discovered over the years is we do see a significant increase in good weather in Tahoe. Those folks tend to move out of the Tahoe area, either to Reno or down here to Auburn. So they do get counted as part of the larger count, but they are seasonally homeless in eastern Placer County.
Thanks, Marguerite. All right, any more questions?
How you guys doing today?
Hi.
My name is Derek Wright. I'm actually a former client at the shelter run by VOA, late 2017. And I really think that, as someone that, they've really been a great help to me, actually, you know, very inspirational people, really care for the community, care for the homeless, you know. And I just think it'd be really unfortunate if they left. I'm not saying that Gathering Inn's not good. I don't know much about Gathering Inn, honestly, but I know that VOA is really good people. And, yeah, you know, because a little bit about my life story, I just got out of prison like six months ago, right? And I struggled with substance abuse. And I guess, once I came in that shelter, they pointed me in the right direction, to the right people. And, yeah, I can't believe I'm so nervous up here. It's like, I'm usually just
You're doing fine, you're doing fine.
I'm usually a great public speaker, actually, believe it or not. And as far as community supporting one program or the other, I think, you know, I think, it's not like there was a vote on it, you know, it's not like we had an election to see who supports what. But I think if the community really got to learn more about how VOA actually operates, I think they would be very impressed. In fact, we've, actually, there's a lot of classes now. Like, when we go to the shelter, it's not just where you just sit in bed all day or go smoke. There's classes you have to go to. So it's like anger management or emotional wellness. In fact, the Weimar Institute, I don't know if you guys are familiar with them at all, they, we have a, well, not we, but VOA has a contract with them to where they can come and teach us every week about emotional wellness. So that's something that's pretty impressive. And I really appreciate those guys very much for taking their time to, you know, I mean, help the homeless out. Because a lot of people just look at homeless and there's, you know, they, there's certain stereotypes, you know. So it's like, for those people to take their time to really help us, I appreciate it. And not everybody. And I was looking at these stats, too, and kind of off-topic, but I think the fact that 8% of the chronically homeless are veterans, to me, that's unacceptable. That number should be at zero. And I think, you know, I mean, I'm not going to blame nobody, but I think it's sort of a, it's not just a homeless problem. I think it's a, it's sort of a symptom of society that we even have this problem the way we do. And I think it really needs to be addressed real seriously. And whoever gets this contract, whether it's VOA or Gathering Inn, I just, I really pray that you guys make this a priority, you know, and just not judge people, just, you know, I mean, by whatever they're at in life, you know, especially for the veterans, too. And, you know, because my brother, he actually is in the, sorry, I spoke over time, but my brother, he's in the Marines right now. He's stationed in Japan, you know. I know there's a lot of tension in that area. And I would hate to think that someone like him, because we all know that veterans, sometimes they get PTSD or other mental disorders. I noticed mental disorders was 41% of chronically homeless. So a lot of that has to do with trauma, you know, I mean, I know military is a pretty traumatic experience, you know. So I just hate, I just hate to think that someone like him could potentially be in a situation of being homeless, you know, for stuff that's basically for them serving their country, you know.
Right.
But that's about it, you know.
Okay, thank you for coming forward.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming forward and sharing your story. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sherry Cusick, Rockland. Just a couple of quick questions. On the point-in-time count, that's awesome that it's gone down. The, I just want a clarification. On Auburn, there's 267 unduplicated people they served, and Gathering Inn is 299 unduplicated numbers. Does that just mean that the 267 haven't been back to, how do I say this? Could someone have been in Auburn and in, could they have been duplicated that way, in Auburn or in?
We make efforts to not have duplication based on demographic material that we take once we do all the numbers. So we, Roseville was counting at the exact same time that Auburn was counting.
Okay, that was, I was wondering if that's
Yeah. And so, and then we check, you know, data burst, genders, to rule out any duplication, just in case. And that happens to be more for like, if we counted in Forest Hill, you know, on, at a feeding, two days later for that Monday.
Okay.
That night, the 24th.
And so that wasn't part of the, were these numbers used for the point-in-time count?
These are all, yes, all unduplicated numbers given.
Okay. And the whole person care pilot program that helps people with multiple, you know, chronic conditions, mental illness, I see two homes were purchased with 15 beds. conditions, mental illness, I see two homes were purchased with 15 beds. I was understanding if it was more than six beds, that the public would know where these houses are, just for
Yeah, one of the homes we purchased was off of Lake Arthur Boulevard in the unincorporated area north of Auburn, and it was a former board and care.
Okay.
And so with a board and care, with a conditional use permit, you're actually able to house more individuals.
Okay. And then the other?
The other house has a maximum of six individuals that can live there at any one time.
Okay. Okay, so we won't know where that's at?
Excuse me?
We won't know where that house is at?
Oh, that house actually is in Rockland.
Okay, that's what I thought. I, the last, you mentioned that, I will have to say, Mr. Duran, but one or two board meetings ago, you had mentioned, well, it would be nice just as a gesture to let the local, okay. And then, the status of, you know, this is on housing initiatives, homeless initiatives. What is the status on Plaza Rescue Mission? I know, if I understand right, May's, kind of, there's kind of a deadline coming up in May for them, for some decisions? If this is
We have no information regarding that.
Nothing, okay, so we don't know what's going on with that, or?
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're not blindsided. Okay, and then, I don't know if this applies, but are they the only ones, or will there be an RFP for another agency to?
Oh, for the homeless shelter in Auburn?
If they're, well, if they're looking, if they're looking in South Placer in the unincorporated area?
Yeah, I think it's too early in the discussion to even have that.
Too early to tell?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, but nothing
Basically, I think it's just basically a concept, and there is some work moving forward on that, but we have no information.
Nothing's been agreed and no me
Nothing's been presented to the board.
Perfect, I just, okay, nothing since November, their November presentation?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. John Brewer. I just had one question on most of the services for the homeless, whether it be alcohol or drug dependency or mental health issues, where are those services available to them currently in the county? The largest facility?
Yeah, so for mental health services, we've added services here in Auburn, so they're at the government campus, and we run daily screening clinics, and then we work to get people into mental health services as soon as possible. We, there's also services provided by the Seventh-day Adventist at their church on the other side of Highway 49, one day a week. They have a clinic there. They also have a therapist there and a psychiatrist one day a week. We also provide services in South Placer at Kirby Hills, our outpatient services. But then with our full service partnership program and also our whole person care, we will actively engage people in the field and provide some services directly wherever we find individuals.
So then
And then in terms of drug and alcohol services, most of our, we provide screening assessment clinics at least one day a week, either in Auburn or at Kirby Hills in South Placer. Most of our outpatient services are provided by contracted providers. And so if you'd like, we can certainly get you more detailed information about the various programs that we contract with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Anyone else? All righty, thank you so much for bringing the update.
Thank you.
If I could, I just want to, I just want to thank the both of you for putting so much time and effort to this, and I want to echo Betsy's comments that, you know, I think it's great that the work the county has done. In 2004, there was a task force that got together and was going to end homelessness in Placer County in 10 years, and unfortunately, while we did some of the recommendations that they suggested, we really did not put that wholehearted implementation process in place. And I think within the last couple of years, our board has really taken that up, and it has not been easy. It has not been a delightful experience, I think, for any of us involved in this, including the public and including the folks who are in the shelters and including for staff and electeds. But I think we are really, truly, finally starting to see some really significant changes around this. And it's my hope, and I've expressed this to Betsy and I've expressed it to whoever else I've spoken with, that whoever the RFP ends up going to, that the community and all of us continue to recognize that what is important is working on reducing homelessness. And it's not the particular players in the process, but it's that goal that we all agree upon. And so, again, just thank you so much for all your efforts on this, because it's been a lot of work, and I very much appreciate your efforts towards it.
Thank you. We'll now move to department items. Item six, Public Works and Facilities, Kings Beach Roundabout Transportation Art Project.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. We're going to mobilize a couple small, they're called maquettes, pieces of art that are being proposed for the Kings Beach Roundabouts, and I'm going to provide the presentation on today's item. And I've got Dan LaPlante here, who's an engineer with our Tahoe Engineering and Design Department, who can answer some of the more technical questions that could potentially come up. So I want to start by explaining first why we're here and what we're asking for, and then give you some history on the roundabout proposal for art. So the purpose of today's presentation is really to outline the history of this planned capital project and then request your board's action on a couple items, so we can move it forward. Speaking of moving forward, ah, I was using the laser pointer. Oops, wrong button. Sorry about that. So where we've been, we have provided funding to Tahoe Public Art as early as 2013 to really kickstart their organization and their interest in having art in public spaces in the North Lake Tahoe area. Specific to this project, we had provided, your board had agreed to allocate TOT funds to the organization to fund art in the two Kings Beach roundabouts as that roundabout project was completed. And we are currently under contract with the organization to implement these two pieces. So back in 2014, they released a call for projects to artists who might be interested in creating the pieces of art that would appear in the two roundabouts, the Coon Street Roundabout and the Bear Street Roundabout. There were 38 artists who submitted proposals with interest in creating that work. And over the course of a couple months, two different juries reviewed the artwork and then made recommendations for the community to consider the top five. The pieces were judged, including criteria based on the area's natural environment, cultural history, environmental stewardship, stimulating thought and attracting attention, and creating a sense of place in the new Kings Beach Commercial Core project. The art was also required at that time to meet certain size and material standards per Caltrans's regulations that were in place at that time. The jury and the public selection culminated in March of 2015 in having a community vote on the top pieces. We had 429 voters who cast 858 votes for the top five pieces. And then as recent as December of this year, you'll see a two-year kind of delay there that we'll describe here in a second, we kind of updated NITRAC because a few things had changed as it relates to Caltrans's regulations that made it imperative that we look at different pieces of art, so they weren't ultimately the top two that were selected by the community. So let me describe that a little bit. Caltrans reviewed or reviewed and revised their process in May 2016. It was initially spurred by a lawsuit related to copyrights and who had the copyright for art that is in the state highway public right-of-way. And in addition to that, Caltrans determined that mobile art would not be allowed. One of the pieces that was selected as the top two, I think it was the second piece, was actually a piece of art that moved, and Caltrans said that they didn't want that to be allowed anymore, and they would only allow that piece of art if it were fixed, and the artist didn't want to do that because he's kind of a Calder kind of guy, and he does mobile artwork, not stationary. So they now require a copyright agreement. Our number-one community selection artist did not want to sign the copyright agreement. He felt that the art belonged to him and the public and not to Caltrans, so that is kind of where we are today. They also require that the public agency is the applicant, and we had initially had a contract with Tahoe Public Art, the nonprofit, to do a lot of this work. And so now we're working in partnership, and the project's being led by our Department of Public Works and Facilities. They also require public acceptance, so you'll see one of the resolutions that we're asking you to approve today acknowledges that there is public acceptance and interest in these two pieces of art. So, long story. This was the number-one piece selected by artist Troy Cordless. He is out of Truckee. He's done other artwork in public spaces in the Truckee area, received 211 votes back in 2015. This is the Swimming with Friends, and I'm sorry I didn't have the design, it's just the black and white drawing here, but you can see that fish there was articulated, and there were a series of them that would go around on that post, and that's what Caltrans wouldn't allow. That piece received 207 votes. And here is Deo Aga. This is the piece that you see, or did I pronounce it incorrectly? Sorry. It means Lake Tahoe in Washoe, according to some sources. So this is one of the pieces that is being proposed. It was the piece that came in number three in the original votes back in 2015 with 200 votes. So you see that there, even though there's a, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, they all came in pretty close to each other. And here is Estrella, which is by artist Roger Berry, that received 132 votes. That's the maquette here that you see on my right. And then the number-five piece, Washoe Cairn, and this was by artist Bob Stokes. So where are we today? You can see, this is an actual aerial of the Coon Street Roundabout where one of the pieces would go. The footings have actually been placed for the artwork as part of the project, so it's been planned for, and we're hoping now to implement it. Here's a visual simulation of the piece that I'm not going to pronounce again, and Badger would be placed in the Coon Street Roundabout. And then Estrella would be placed in the Bear Street Roundabout. I can pronounce that word. And then we've got a lot of information here for your board on next steps, and I'm going to summarize that for you. We're going to be working with Caltrans over the next several months to approve various agreements. So there's a copyright agreement, a maintenance agreement, a landscape agreement. We've got, we'll be receiving, we hope, within the next couple months, final art approval by Caltrans, because they have to actually approve the art once your board says that indeed it has received public review and acceptance. And then we'll be going forward with encroachment permits with Caltrans in July. Got some more next step here. The bottom line is that we're hoping that the artists will be able to fabricate the work over the summer, once we get the Caltrans approvals, and have them installed maybe late summer by, through mid-fall. So that is the goal with the entire effort. So we've got some requested actions, so you'll be wondering what you need to kick this step into next gear. Staff is recommending that your board approve the two actions. The first is the resolution of public acceptance. And then the next is to authorize our Department of Public Works and Facilities Director to enter into agreements both with the artist, Roger Berry and Brett Moten, for the pieces so that they can be developed, and then also to enter into agreements with Caltrans for landscape and general maintenance for the artwork. So the recommendation from staff is to move forward on both of those pieces. Happy to answer any questions or direct anything to Dan LaPlante, sitting next to me here.
Questions from board members? Yes, Jennifer.
I just want to say thank you to all of you for continuing to push this forward. It was a little bit frustrating with the changing context of the Caltrans guidelines, but I think it's really important to recognize that both these pieces of art were in front of the public on a number of occasions, including most recently at the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council just a few months ago. And we did get public reaffirmation that these pieces were pieces, frankly, that the community did want to see in the roundabouts. But I also just really want to make sure that people understand that this is not a Spinal Tap process here. These will actually be full-size. You know, it will not be like the tiny Stonehenge that the people danced around in Spinal Tap. So thank you all for your efforts. Much appreciated.
I wonder if someone, this is a very beautiful piece, but I need some interpretation. What is that?
It's a star. So Estrella is Spanish for star.
Oh.
Jennifer, can you help me with that?
It's a star?
Yes. You can see it from different directions.
Wow.
Well, I'm going to
From the previous slides, you can see it, as you go around the roundabout, it looks kind of like a flower or a star.
So it's stationary and as we drive around?
It will be stationary, yes.
Yeah, and so
Be up to the viewer to notice it in different perspectives.
How many times were you allowed to drive around?
You can drive around
Probably as often as you want.
Yeah.
The faster the better.
And I will say that part of the public feedback that I've heard on Estrella is while it is star, while that is what it's identified as by the artist, a lot of people actually saw it as like Tahoe waves or the mountains surrounding the basin, so there were a lot of opportunities for different interpretations as to what that actually represented.
It looks like it's something could be in a mix master. Just saying. Sorry, but it is very
Beauty is in the eyes of the beholder.
That's right. I don't know much about art, but I know what I like. Any other questions? Anybody from the audience wish to? Marguerite?
I'm Marguerite Sprague, back again live from Tahoe City and Tahoe Public Art, but I thought if you had any further questions about Estrella, you might like to meet the artist. Roger Berry is with us today. Sure.
Hello, I am Roger Berry. I'm a sculptor from Clarksville, California, another big, big town.
Oh, yeah.
I will answer any questions, but I was amused by the mix master. I like to take bread. So, of course, and maybe that's where it came from. The origin of it, when building a piece, there's the work I'm doing in my mind, and then there's a place.
Yeah.
And they come together in a narrative. In this case, what I was remembering is being a kid in Lake Tahoe, which is some while ago, and I'm from Sacramento. We don't have a sky. You come up here, and all of a sudden, there's the stars, all of the stars. And I was just thinking about that wonderful, you live with the Milky Way up there. It's remarkable. And so that became a point of origin. I created this piece as I was doing it. I was also remembering that I was at the Olympics. This is six rings, not five, but I was remembering all of that stuff.
Yeah.
So this is a ridiculously childish, emotional piece for me. But the important part about my work generally, and this piece in specific, is that you drive around it.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
So if you're one way, you know, you're going down the Boulevard, you're going to see this. If you're coming at it another way, you're going to see this, but as you go around, they kind of dance among themselves.
Ah.
And they'll listen, they'll be visible at night and they'll experience night to day. And that's it. Caltrans won't let us have mobiles, so I make you move.
Oh, yeah. Very good.
And I've done a number of pieces like this, and they, when they're successful, they make a place, and that's really the point of sculpture. So, that's it.
Very good. It just, you know, if anybody asks me, now I know.
Yeah.
I can give them an answer that's reasonable, not a mix master.
That, well, or we've got an invention.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. So, we're asked to take some action?
Yes, two actions.
Adopt a resolution? Oh, it's right there.
I would move that we move item 6A1 to A, B, and C.
Okay. It's been moved in second to move the item. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Look forward to seeing that. And now we'll move to item eight, is the South Shore Drive Storm Damage Project. Donner Lake. Who's in charge of this? Oh, it's Mr. Mitchell, right? Ha. John, good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, board. John Mitchell, Associate Engineer with the Tahoe Engineering Division and Project Manager for the South Shore Drive Storm Damage Repair Project. South Shore Drive and the project is located on the west shore of Donner Lake, and is the only access for the residents getting to South Shore. And it's the only access for the residents getting to south shore of Donner Lake. The project was damaged in the 2017 winter storms and is a FEMA/CalOES-approved project. To date, the county has repaired South Shore Drive to temporary condition to allow for safe vehicle passage to the south shore of Donner Lake. Construction will continue this spring and summer, improving the road to a permanent repaired condition. The permanent repairs include storm damage facility, not currently there, to allow better water flow and also improve the roadway surface. We're asking you to approve a budget revision to increase revenues for the Department of Public Works and Facilities for PC 30325, South Shore Drive Storm Damage Project, in the amount of $427,000. And again, the funding is provided by FEMA and CalOES.
All right, any question?
Any questions?
Any questions from board members? I see none. Anyone in the audience wish to address us on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for approval. It's been moved and seconded. This is a roll call vote, so would the clerk please call the roll?
Duran?
Absent.
Oh, sorry. Wygant, Euler, Montgomery, Holmes?
Yes. All righty, thank you. The item is moved. Now we'll move to item seven, County Executive, Annexation of Rio Bravo Rockland into the Sunset Industrial Area Community Facilities District. Mr. Mackel Downey.
Good morning, Chairman, board members. My name is John Mackel Downey, Placer County Emergency Services Program Manager. Today, by action requested, I'm requesting that your board conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, tabulate ballots, and adopt a resolution to annex Assessor's Parcel Number 017063031, owned by Rio Bravo Rockland in the Community Facilities District Number 2012-1, the Sunset Industrial Area Services, and apply the established charge for fire protection services and emergency medical services on this parcel within the said district. By way of background, in November 2012, your board approved the formation of Community Facilities District Number 2012-1, Sunset Industrial Area, to fund ongoing fire protection and emergency services within the SIA of unincorporated Placer County. CFD 2012-1 is intended to equitably spread costs of both fire protection and emergency medical services to new development within the SIA via a special assessment on the property taxes of annexed parcels. In 2012, the maximum manual assessment was the greater of either eight cents per square foot of building space or $757 per acre. These unit rates were presented in $2,012, of course, and subject to an annual inflationary adjustment for properties annexed into the CFD. Current rates are nine cents per square foot of building, or, again, the greater, nine cents of, nine cents per square foot of building space are $816.79 per acre. This annexation is consistent with and supports board policy to spread the cost of funding fire protection and emergency medical services equitably to development within the Sunset Industrial Area. In terms of fiscal impact, this annexation meets Placer County's general plan goals and policies associated with that equitable apportionment of fire service costs within the SIA. And just a quick aside, Rio Bravo Rockland has been outstanding participant on the tree mortality task force, and it's great to have them on the team. And with that, I'll ask you to request that you conduct a public hearing.
All right, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. We need to?
Could have one question.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
John, was this driven by their CUP for the?
For the grinder?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
All right now, so I'll ask the clerk about the, any considerate protest, tabulate ballots.
One ballot was received in favor.
All righty. Okay, then we can move forward with a. It's been moved and seconded by item 7A, Annexation of Rio Bravo Rockland into the Sunset Industrial Community Facilities District. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none? The item is moved. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thanks for waiting. Been entertaining, huh? All right, we will now adjourn to closed session.
The board will now adjourn to closed session for a conference with legal counsel to discuss one item of existing litigation and two items of anticipated litigation. The board will also have a conference with its real property negotiators to discuss property in the North Auburn area for acquisition. And finally, the board will have a conference with this labor negotiation team to discuss DSA negotiations. The board has returned from closed session in a conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation of Bo Banger versus County Placer, the board heard a report on the class action cases and gave direction to counsel. Under anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, the board heard a report and authorized the retention of outside counsel, Baron and Bud, on a contingency fee agreement to represent the county in the nationwide opioid litigation. The board also authorized a joint prosecution agreement with various northern county consortium counties. And finally, the board authorized outside counsel to prepare and file a complaint on behalf of the county for recoverable damages. The board authorized those things on a vote of four-one. Euler voting no. In significant exposure to litigation, the board heard a report and gave direction to counsel. The board also had a conference with its real property negotiators to discuss a potential acquisition and gave direction to its real property negotiation team. And finally, in a conference with labor negotiators, the board heard a report on the commencement of labor negotiations with the Deputy Sheriff's Association. That concludes the closed session report.
And that concludes the business before the board. We will adjourn this meeting in memory of former supervisor George Miller.